Ready, we'll start. Okay, good evening. Today is June 22nd. This is the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. This time I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're now in executive session. And for the public, at the end of executive session but before the start of the meeting, there will be a retirement party for retirees briefly in the business conference room. Well, thank you everybody for being here. We were just across the hall having cake with some recent retirees and which we're gonna mention earlier as soon as we get going. But at this time, may I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Only my fourth, only my fourth pledge for the day.
Is it sweating?
Yeah. Okay. So, all the changes made it to the, the one that everybody can see. Okay. So there are no additional modifications to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to pride, I believe. Do you want to do the retirees first?
No. They can pick one.
All right. Move. I got it.
Oh, I told them.
Not that this isn't the most important pride, but it kinda is.
Yeah. It's, yeah. So, we would like to take a moment to honor, we're going to honor the retirees in a minute, but we would like to take a moment to honor our second student board of education member, James Pineda. Come on up. So, two years ago, the Hyde Park Central School District asked the voters, and by law, we're required to ask the voters if they approve having a student member of the board of education. They said yes two years ago, and we actually have to ask them every two years, so we'll be able to have one next year as well. But James is the second in hopefully a very long line of student board members for the Hyde Park Central School District. So, we wanted to publicly thank you for your service. It takes an exceptional student to decide he wants to spend his time with a board of education at least a couple of times a month and read through the board packet. And we also want to thank you for representing your peers. And we know you took your role very seriously and diligently, and you have effected change. We're piloting a new program because every time we revisited the concept in the past of the waiver for athletes for PE, it never, you know, got any traction. But I think it took the student voice at the table to give it the traction it needed, so we're gonna pilot it next year, and we thank you.
All right. Yeah. Well, we have a little plaque for you. But first, I'd like to say, this has been amazing year. You're an amazing young man. Dr. Reckes has stolen all things I would have said, but your demeanor and your attendance, everything about you has been just outstanding, and we'd like to give you this plaque and hope that when you return from your journey, you come in and see us again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now, we'd like to recognize, we had a list of retirees, and as we do every year, very sadly so, but this year, we started a new tradition. Each year, we would sit here at the table, mostly, in a mostly empty room, and acknowledge people on an agenda where their retirements were listed, and we thanked them for their service to an empty room, and it just, it didn't seem right. So, we endeavored to have a recep, invite retirees. This is the first year that we've done that. We had a reception earlier with a beautiful cake, and it's, it was an opportunity for us to recognize you and thank you and wish you well. So, with us tonight, we, and, and all of these employees have been with us for a long time and have touched the lives of hundreds of students in one way or another. So, we have with us tonight Carol Mitchie, Mary Ellen Cholitis, Mike Pastor, and Andrea Sianzi. And joining us also this evening was Cheryl Noonan, but she was unable to stay for, for the board portion of it. So, we thank you for coming to our very first ever retiree celebration, and what a difference, I know, for me to actually be able to say thank you and goodbye. So, and thank you so much for coming, and really, best wishes.
Thank you. It was delicious.
Oh, thanks. We'll get the picture up on the website. And, and you can, you don't have to stay. Yeah. Not here with us tonight is our retiring principal of North Park Elementary. And because this was our first time doing the retiree celebration, there was a little coordination problem. A number of our retirees from, are from North Park as well, and they planned their retirement celebration for the same night as the board meeting. So, I went, we have, we had a plaque for Lisa for her years of service as the North Park Elementary Principal. And Mary Beth Scattergood, the president of the Hyde Park Teachers Association, will be giving it to her on our behalf tonight. So, she will get her plaque as well, and, and we definitely want to thank her for her years of service.
Okay. Any other, is there any other pride? No? No other activity? Oh, the organ pride.
Yeah, the organ.
James, yes, yes. There is.
Yeah.
James played the organ.
Yeah.
And it was a great, it was a nice night. There was a lot of different kinds of music that I didn't know you could play on an organ. It was actually very interesting. The best part of it for me was, they had two cameras, one on the keyboard and one on the footboard, if that's what it's called, and you could actually see what they were doing. You know, how many times you've gone to watch a, somebody play the organ, and all you see is, you know, this is about, you're seeing as much as I would, you know, normally see. And that was a revelation, watching him take different, different keyboards, changing things, and I guess it's all electronic, so there's just buttons you push and stuff. It was, it was a nice night, and he played well.
Yeah. Beautiful. Really beautiful.
Was this the first time that it was done as part of the Music in the Parks Program?
No, last year was part of the Music in the Parks Program, but this year, they added a bit of flair to it, so it was.
Yeah, the flair was nice. I recommend everybody to go and see it. It was wonderful.
Yeah.
It was great. And for those of you who don't know, the district has a digital, Alan, a theater digital organ, so this is a very sophisticated instrument. We're one of the few in New York State that has one. It was all donated to the school. The lessons for the students are donated free of charge, but the students have to make themselves available. So, in addition to everything else James does in the orchestra, he took, he availed himself of the organ lessons that we had. So, congratulations, James. It was great.
All right. Maybe you'll, you'll get a chance at the big one out in Salt Lake City.
Maybe, yeah. In the future.
Okay. Do you have anything else for?
I don't, I don't know if James knows.
As a report?
Oh.
Yes, I have a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead, James.
So, this past week has been full of final exams and regents weeks for all students that have needed them to graduate. And this past week, our seniors have had their senior week, which consisted of six flag trip to New England on Monday, a barbecue at the school FDR on Tuesday, and a drive-in movie night, yes, last night, at the Hyde Park Drive-In. Is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
All right, yeah. And I would like to thank Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Rich, who are the class advisors, with all the work and the time that they put into the week and in this, in this past year, and all the preparation that was, that was and is being put into tomorrow's ceremony. Very grateful for them, yeah. And also, the senior video is up on the FDR website if you would like to view it. It's a little over 14 minutes long, so if you has, if you have time, then I recommend you watch it.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you left?
Great, thanks.
Okay. Sorry, James. I do that every time. Yeah. But I thought there was, you know, so little happening at the high school than fun and games that, okay. All right. So, do you have any?
I do have two other small ones before we begin our formal report. One is that the committee that was put together to interview the respondents to the, for architectural services met, and I believe the recommendation was to go with CS Arch Architectural Services. So, you will be meeting and hearing from them in the future. James, that was your first subcommittee, I believe?
Yeah.
And so, I know it was Perry, James, Dan, and was, I wasn't on it, so I've.
And Elliot and I.
Elliot and Linda.
Okay, good. So, you'll be hearing more in the future, but thank you for that recommendation. And then, earlier in the year, we had a conversation about bond refunding, and we actually passed a resolution to ref, it's actually refinancing the bond, but they call it refunding. And, but at the time, the interest rates weren't favorable, and I'm gonna turn it over to Linda because now they are, and we just don't want you, we want you to be able to have the opportunity to weigh in.
Yep. So, in December, the board passed the resolution for bond refunding, but chose at that time not to move forward with it because the interest rates were, were a little bit lower than they had been before, and we weren't sure, it was a risk to go out for the refunding. And we don't need a vote again on that, but we did make a commitment to the board to bring it back here if we thought that we would want to look into that again. And our financial advisor from Bernie Donigan's office, it's Jason Schwartz, he called us this week to let us know that even though interest rates aren't changing, because we're seven months closer to the call dates for those bonds, he believes we should look into the refunding again. By his calculations, we could save over the next 10 years about $200,000. So.
Okay. Actually, I've been following the bond rates closely, and I thought when he presented, it had to be somewhere around 1.87, and it's still 2.14, 2.15.
Yeah. I did ask him about that, and he said it was because of the, the age of the bonds at that time, but he said because we're seven months closer to, because it was seven months ago when they did the calculation, because we're seven months closer to the call dates that even though the interest rates aren't changing, that it's still manageable for us to move forward. And he did an analysis too, like if, if interest rates change by 25 basis points, we could still save about $140,000. So, he's recommending that we move forward with it, and I think we should too.
Okay.
So, we could.
So, is this something we have to okay as a formal vote on another agenda?
No, you, you don't have to vote on it again. You could either, but because we committed to bringing it back here, we could either just talk about it now, or I could bring something to the next meeting, maybe bring some more information and present it. But it doesn't require a vote.
Okay.
But we do want the board's okay.
I'm just curious of what his estimate of where the bond, the 10-year treasuries will end up. Is this a low point? Do you think it's gonna go back up again? Or is it gonna continue to drop? And should we wait a month before? Seems like a year ago, it was at 1.65.
Right.
Because it was in the summertime, so.
Right.
And that's a big difference.
Right.
So, I'm just, I would like more.
Okay.
Information and advice on what they must know.
Yeah. There's, there are two, there's two, there's two considerations. It's the age of the bonds and the interest rates.
Okay.
So, we did ask them why they hadn't brought it forward to us at the end of last year, and they said the bonds were too far away from the call date to make it profitable to us at that time. I can get some more calculations from them. It was just this week that we talked to them, so we don't have all of the detail on it.
Well, I mean, it has, they have, the interest rate has come down in the last month. I was just curious where it was gonna end up, because a few more points could make a difference, so.
Yeah, right. That's why I did ask for the other calculation, but they only went out. They fit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what the rest of the board wants to weigh in. But I'd like to be assured that we're, it's the right time to do it.
Yeah. And when we move forward, like it's not based on the interest rates as of today, because there's work to be done.
Right.
So, if we were to, if we were to do it tomorrow, the, the date would be early August, so it'd be whatever, whatever interest rate was at that time. And if we wait until the next meeting, then I guess it would be the end of August, because it would be pushed out three weeks later. I can bring, I can do a presentation for the next meeting.
Yeah. Let's look a little deeper in the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I was gonna propose we, we reorder this so that the therapy dog.
That is a good idea.
Yep.
Can I have a quick motion to move 6.4 up to be the next and first item in reports, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. So, we're gonna go with the therapy dog thing.
And I know he just went to the, but we can, I'm sure we have enough to talk about and start for, yeah.
I can start and just give a little.
Yeah. And Aviva, I knew you were gonna help with this one too. Or were you just gonna?
I'm just here to support and add detail, but I, I don't need to stand there.
Okay.
I can if you want.
I do, I do have to say that I don't, when was the first time you brought this subject to our meetings?
As soon as Deanna brought it to me, so probably a few months.
So, oh, come on, was it like, it would seem like more than a few months.
It was probably, Elna and I have been talking about this for, for a little while, but it was probably October, November.
Yeah.
Where we started to actively look into it, and I met with Dr. Crenshaw to learn more about the program.
And I, I just have to say that it was refreshing that Aviva and Linda and I meet weekly, and of all the topics we have to talk about, the most refreshing topic this year was the number of times she brought the therapy dog to the meetings to discuss, so.
Yeah. We're really excited about it, too. So, so tonight, we just wanted to share with you a little bit about the program and how we think it would benefit Violet Avenue and could have a benefit for the other schools in the district as well. The children's home has had a facility dog program there, and we were lucky enough to go, Elna Sanford and I were lucky enough to go and visit Dr. Crenshaw, and he told us about the program and the benefits that it has for the children. And we thought that it would not only benefit the children at the children's home, but could have a great benefit at Violet Avenue. And we started to do some research in not only supporting the social emotional health of children, but also the academic growth of children. So, I, we've brought the cute factor. And I have Dr. Crenshaw here just to share with you a little bit about what the program is like at the children's home and the benefit he sees with children. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Crenshaw and then answer any questions you might have. You get to stand there.
Okay. And you've been, you've been introduced to, Christine Martini is one of our most talented social workers. Please don't steal her from me. I stole her from Aster, and they haven't quite forgiven me yet for, for doing that. But she's wonderful as a social worker, but she's also the primary handler for Marshall. And, and Marshall lives with Christine and, Kristen and her husband Matt here in Hyde Park. So, Marshall is very happy living with Christine and Matt, and he's very pampered. And he's, he's a wonderful addition to our facility dogs. Ace is the older dog that we, we've had for four years. He, he turned six in June. And before Ace, we had Ivy. And the first dog that we had was Rosie, who's quite a legend in her time, because she was the one that made New York State court history, being the first dog ever in New York State to be permitted to be on the witness stand with an adolescent girl who had to testify about the, the sexual abuse she had suffered for a four-year period. And we knew she wouldn't be able to do this, because she could barely talk to her therapist about it. But with the help of Rosie at her side, she was able to be on the stand for an hour and a half and, and give accurate and complete testimony. And as a result, the man was given a maximum sentence. But during that time, when Rosie was on loan to us by ECAD, Educated Canines for Assisting Disabilities, their headquarters are in Torrington, Connecticut, we discovered, we also had a couple of girls that I was working with very closely who had had such a traumatic experience, I'm not even gonna tell you what it, what it was, you don't need to be traumatized yourself. But Rosie also sat in on the sessions I had with these two sisters, and we just noticed what an incredible difference it made just to have the dog present. And that, that's what we found, that having the dog even in the room, if the child is not playing with the dog or interacting with the dog, it doesn't matter. The children feel calmer, they feel safer, and they feel more trusting. And so, those are the three things that we've discovered over and over again. Now, some, some kids will interact with the dog very actively. Some will get down on the floor and play with the dog. Some kids like to brush the dogs, even take care of the dogs, checking their, their nails, checking their ears for signs of infection, and even brushing their teeth in some, some cases. And that was the other thing we discovered. I, I thought when we brought the dogs in, that mainly the benefit would be in terms of their unconditional acceptance of the kids. But what we've discovered is that these kids love to give to the dogs. And some of them have never had a safe person in their life to give to. So, the pleasure, the joy they get in giving is just amazing. Now, Marshall is, is just a love, and I'll give you an example of things these dogs do that we would have never predicted or never even thought of. But we had a little seven-year-old girl in our emergency program who was so depressed because she was taken out of her home, that she wouldn't take a shower. And she hadn't taken a shower for about four days in a row. So, we asked her, if, if Marshall helped you, do you think you'd be able to take a shower? And she said, well, maybe. So, we got Marshall involved, and so, Marshall brings the towels into the bathroom, and she takes one of them and lays it down on the floor for Marshall to lie on while she gets in the shower. And then, when she comes out, Marshall hands her a fresh towel. And that, that was all the, that was the last time she gave any resistance to a shower. And I told Kristen about it, and she says, oh, he does that at home. Every time they take a shower, he comes running with the towels. And then, I called the trainer at ECAD and, oh yeah, we train the dogs to do that, because most of these dogs are assigned to combat veterans or disabled people who, you know, basically, they take care of them. And so, they, they're trained to turn the lights on and off, go to the refrigerator and take out a drink and bring it to the person, put clothes in the washer. You know how to do that, Marshall. Yeah. You know how to take care of somebody. So, most of those commands we never use, but the main reason we have found having such a well-trained dog is that we absolutely can count on them in terms of safety. Because some of the more impulsive kids, younger kids, will rough the dogs up if they get a chance. Sometimes we get too close to their eyes. And I know of a person in my field who works with therapy dogs, and she sent me an email around April, and she said already they'd had seven cases of therapy dogs biting kids in the face. So, that's not the kind of thing you wanna have to worry about. These dogs, you know, right from the, right from the beginning, it's a two-year training program. And, and part of that, right from the time they open their eyes, four days old, they, they get handled by a lot of different people, and they get used to that. They take them to Grand Central Station, they take them to airports, they take them to restaurants, they, they take them to shopping malls. They get used to being around all kinds of chaos and, and all kinds of stimulation, and, and they can remain focused and calm under all those conditions. And they're safety tested around children. That's something that therapy dogs, in order to be certified, they don't go through a safety test around children. So, so that, that's why we've always opted to get the best trained dogs available, and we don't regret that a moment, because over and over, we've seen the wisdom of, of doing that. In a court case, the, any lawyers in the, I don't wanna insult anybody, but the defense attorney accidentally, accidentally spilt a glass of ice water this tall into the witness box onto the dog. The dog's name was Stilson. I met Stilson out in Seattle, and Stilson didn't react at all. You know, the, the defense attorney was counting on a mistrial, some kind of disruption. That, that's why you need such a well-trained dog, because they, they can cope with just about any unexpected disruption, something that other dogs might jump out of that. unexpected disruption, something that other dogs might jump out of that box and want to bite somebody. Stilson, his head never appeared above the witness box, so the jurors never saw him. So when I met Stilson, I gave him a big hug and told him he was my hero because it saved that little girl from having to go through another trial. So originally, we got them for use in the courtroom. We found them so incredibly helpful with the kids in counseling sessions. And a lot of kids at the Children's Home will just say, I need my Ace time, or I need my Marshall time. And all they want is just to be able to come up to the dog. And I would think at Violet Avenue School, having the dog greet the kids when they come in the morning, say goodbye to them when they leave at night, and then being available for counseling sessions or times when kids are going through a hard day, that's what they do. They're so intuitive. They can pick out who's the most stressed in the room, and they'll go to that person. When Rosie was still alive, we took her over to SUNY New Poles, and we talked to the students there. And Rosie was so well-behaved, we just let her go out and greet people. But she was focused on four students in the back of the room. And finally, I said, is there anything you four students have in common? They all had a final exam the next day. Out of this whole auditorium of 500 people, Rosie was in the back of the room centered on those four students. So they just have this uncanny ability to sense when somebody is anxious and stressed, and they go to comfort that person. And Rosie was in the speech and language class at Green Chimneys for eight years. And we pulled her out of retirement to do this court case, but the kids read to her. And I should mention that Ace, during one year when we were really pushing this idea and we're getting it started again, we put mailboxes in all the groups, and the kids wrote 120 letters that year to Ace. And with the help of my interns, Ace answered every one of them. And it's amazing how the kids just poured their heart out to Ace. And so I had two students from Columbia when I taught down there, master students who did their thesis on these letters to Ace. And so, you know, that, too, was something we had never thought of that would be useful. But the kids love to write those letters, and they're thrilled when they get a reply. So I better, you know, I could talk for hours.
Well, I'm sure we have some questions.
Yeah, sure.
Do you want me, I have some specific.
Yeah, I mean, I know Deanna wants to talk a little bit about what it would look like in the school, and I have the financial information contracts and the liability and all of that. And we just really, we didn't want to throw this on a board agenda for you to just sit with and go, what is this? We wanted to give you information ahead of time.
I need to know what kind of training does the handler get? Do they need to be certified? How long is the training? Is it the handler and the owner? Or is it one person, two persons? Are the two of you going to be doing it? Do you both have to be trained? If it's the nurse, what if the dog's there? And then you have a child that's allergic to fur? What do you do there? What about parental objections, perhaps? I don't know why, who would not like that dog? But, you know, are there religious concerns? I mean, there's a whole bunch of questions that I think we need to have answered. I think it's a wonderful program. You know, I wouldn't, you know, say, oh, we can't do that because of X, Y, and Z. I think we can overcome whatever it is. But I would like to know what the roadblock, should we call them, might be. If that's what you're prepared to talk about, then, if nobody minds, then we'll.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the training? Do you want to answer the questions about the training and how many people go and what that looks like for the trainers?
Well, Kristen and I both went through the handler's training. We usually, for each dog we have, we have six trained handlers. I think four is more typical. But we like, you know, because we have people come and go, and we want to make sure we always have people who can take over and help out in case we lose staff members along the way. You know, we expect these dogs to work until they're 10 or 11, so we're going to definitely lose some of the handlers during that period. So that's why we send six handlers. It's a week-long training. It's very intensive. It's like boot camp. The dogs, we work closely with the dogs, and some of it is right there at the facility, the ECAD facility. But a lot of it involves going out in the community. The dogs have to be safely put on elevators, and you have to learn to take them up and downstairs. There are things, little fine points that we have to learn in order to keep them safe. And there are probably 20 commands that we use frequently, so we have to learn those commands and the way they're delivered so that people are doing it in an authoritative way, that the dog will listen. And what else is included in that training?
There was homework. We were tested at the end of it. We all have to catch in order to be certified. They didn't mess around with that at all.
It was valuable training. We learned a lot about dogs and.
Who was responsible for veterinary bills?
Yeah, I mean, Deanna Cannon and I also gathered all that information about legal and liability and all of that.
So I think we're ready for Deanna to give us her particulars about why Violet Avenue.
May I just ask, what's the organization that's doing the training? It's ECAD. ECAD? ECAD. So E-C-A-D is, are the initials? And it stands for, Dr. Crenshaw, exactly?
Actually, disabilities.
Disabilities. And they are in Connecticut. And if you were to search ECAD, they would come up and you would see the organization. They put out a tremendous amount of materials.
And they will do the training onsite.
Correct.
You don't have to necessarily send half a dozen people to their facilities.
Yes. So they can do it onsite. So in addition to the week-long training for handlers, and we have staff who will volunteer to do that, Mrs. Sanford is one, I've agreed to be the main handler for the dog and would be responsible for the dog's care and veterinary bills and food. And so the dog would come home with me, and I would transport the dog back and forth if it was presented in that way. I've already had, there's been some interest expressed for organizations outside to support the program because they feel so strongly about the benefits for kids. And so they, like their veterinary, the veterinary care, there would be an account for the dog where people could donate so that the money was not coming through the district or through myself for ongoing care if they chose to support our school in this endeavor. As far as forms for parents, we would have to be, that would be summer work if it were approved. I would need to put together protocols for that. I would have to be responsible for training the staff on how that would be used. It would be optional, so students, if they had an allergy or a fear, we wouldn't have to introduce the dog to that child in that environment. So it could be a separate environment so that it was by choice, and children who didn't feel comfortable or were allergic would not have to interact with the dog. But those families that were okay with the program would be able to do so and sign consent for that. As far as liability is concerned, of course, the dogs are highly trained, and so it's highly unlikely that there would be an event. But I did check into carrying my own personal insurance for that. And there is dog liability insurance out there, and it's a minimal cost. Part of the certification through ECAD, too, there is a national organization, Assistance Dogs International, which the dogs are registered with through ECAD. And insurance is given when you become a member of that organization because you register your facility as having this program, and then you're protected as part of this association as well. So that sort of with liability and protocol.
And I'll just jump in there a little bit. I did contact our New York State Insurance reciprocal, and their concerns were really addressed in this way. They didn't want the school district assuming liability in case something happened with the dog or there was, you know, a dangerous thing. Also, there are other districts that have had, Gilderland has had a similar program, and we got to see their policies. So the other piece I wanted to add is that there would have to be board policy. And I do have a sample that's been vetted that we could look at. But again, we really wanted to have an open forum to talk about this. So we did look into both any legal concerns, and I think it's really addressed within both the contract and the sample policy, and also what Deanna and her colleagues are willing to take on. And I'll let you go on, and then I can talk specifically about the cost.
Yeah, and we knew this was a really big topic, so we can, this can be a more than one board meeting, but we had to at least get the ball rolling. And I will say that, you know, between Dr. Crenshaw, Deanna, and Aviva, they've done a lot of research. So we'll take this as much as we can tonight, and then if we need to revisit, we can revisit and provide further detail. But go ahead and.
Okay. Thank you. One of, I did attach, there are two articles that Dr. Crenshaw shared with me that are about his experience at the Children's Home with dogs in his facility. And I also attached this article, which was particularly about dogs in a school setting and how does it benefit. And it addresses those concerns, like what do you do about, like, here are the things that people bring up as a concern, and here's how, you know, it can be addressed and how it can be workable, and schools and the benefits.
No, I read the article. I just wanted to know how we were going to do that.
Yeah. So I think through the board policy and through the work that I would need to do with families, and I would need to let, you know, our school community know about the program and the benefits of the program and the permission slip portion of it, there would be work for us to do there. But I do believe, after doing all this research and seeing how it's working at the Children's Home, that it could have a great benefit to all of our children, not just our special education population, but to all kids, and also supporting their literacy skills. Just some of the research and articles that's out there about children sitting and reading with a therapy animal and sitting next to a therapy animal, it has a tremendous impact. And then the writing, I loved that idea. You know how passionate I am about our literacy instruction in our building, to have a mailbox outside of the office to encourage children to write and to express themselves and to have that written communication back from the office. I just think it would benefit the school community. I think it's innovative, it's out of the box, and it's definitely research-based. It's happening around the country, and I think it would be a shining star, sort of, for the district to pilot something like this and to be able to share it on our social media and the work we've been doing this year. I think it would, it's sort of cutting-edge and would be a great, a great thing for the district to kind of show something special.
And I think if there are general questions, you know, this is a good time while we have Dr. Crenshaw here and Deanna, but I also could forward, well in advance of another board meeting, the policy, the contract samples, not to approve at that board meeting, but to really discuss in public the details of it and talk that through. I mean, I have them here, but you need to see it ahead of time to be prepared. But we first wanted you to just get more of a general picture.
Well, can I ask just one obvious question?
Yeah.
Do you purchase the dog? You know, I mean, a pedigree dog like that, I think is probably pretty.
Yes. So there is a flat fee that we would have to pay towards ECAD, and that would include the dog, two years' worth of training because they come to us two years old with the training. They teach them up to, I was looking in the literature, just brushing up before our meeting, 83 different commands. I know there's, they're the basic ones that we would use within the building, but all of that training is involved. It would also include training for our four staff members from the building for the one week. And then there are follow-up sessions as well where they come to check in. I believe there was also a meeting prior to the training where they come to see the facility and so that they can make sure that there's a good match between the dog and the facility, so that the dog's temperament meets the needs of the kids in the building and the needs in the building. So all of that is included with our, with the certification costs.
And I can cut to the chase. It's $10,000. That's how much the program is. And it does take two years before the dog is that, because you get the dog as a puppy. I mean, it starts with a puppy, and it's two years before the dog's actually in the school.
Yes.
And then it's, I think, eight years that it's considered not retired. So it's like a 10-year process, and it is $10,000. The only other cost would be if we send people for the training, but there's no additional cost for the training. It's just travel and, you know, staying there, and that's only if they don't come here. So, and I think, you know, to put a big picture on cost, you know, a dog like this would certainly be beneficial to the whole community, but Violet Avenue does house the elementary social, emotional learning special classes. And the students there have just exponential trauma that other students don't have. So, you know, just in from a cost perspective, if nothing else besides the humanistic, you know, one out of district placement is at least $50,000 a year. So any time that we can maintain a student with their non-disabled peers in school, it's saving their life possibly, but saving a lot of funds as well, so, yeah.
And maybe I could just add, it costs actually about $30,000 to $40,000 to do the training, but ECAD raises funds of its own and is able to reduce the cost to agencies and programs like ours to more reasonable.
Just to recap, because we record these, so Dr. Crenshaw just shared with us that it costs about $30,000 to $40,000 to train and the whole package, but through ECAD that has funding sources, it brings the cost down to a district to $10,000. Just so, because some people in our listening audience that watch this elsewhere could say, there's no way that only costs $10,000. But it is funded through other agencies.
Yes.
And what is the useful lifespan? About how often do you have to change the dogs? I mean, they will age.
Eight years.
Well, I would say eight years would be.
And if, Dr. Crenshaw, if you could stand at the podium with Deanna, so, because they need to pick up your voice, otherwise I'm going to have to repeat everything you say.
I think eight years would be a minimum time. But I talked to Lou Picard, who's the executive director of ECAD, and she felt 11 years is not out of the question. Ivy was 11 years old when she passed away, and she had some serious health problems even before we got her. So I don't think that's out of the question that, Rosie was actually 12 when she went to court.
Okay, I guess the question is, we have four elementary schools. We have a middle school. I can see the benefit there. We have a high school. So if you multiply that 40,000, and I'm taking a high number, by six, then it gets a little bit more expensive, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're using public money in the best possible way.
I can speak to that. I mean, this came to my attention because it was something that Deanna and Elna and others wanted to take on, you know, with a great personal, you know, expenses on their own. I mean, that's one part. Another one is, you know, if we decided to, I mean, this dog could go to other schools with a handler and visit particular situations or special times and certainly be available to the whole district. You know, many programs utilize assisted therapy dog without having it in that school every day. So it would really be a district animal that lives at Violet Avenue and can visit. But even if we got to a place where there was so much benefit, we wanted six dogs, that's, you know, one year of one teacher's salary without benefits, you know, kind of thing. So still in the broad picture, it isn't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, I would like to see this start, and I see this as a pilot. see this start and I see this as a pilot, but I want to know, you know, what are the other principals? I mean, we've had...
This, this right now is a single school initiative. This is, yes.
If you, if you remember Mr. Hughes, if you remember the start of the computer age when we did one school, the rest of the first, and promised to do a little rest, and we never did. And we never heard the end of that, did we, Mr. Hughes?
But I think in, in this case, though, there's no promise. There's been no talk with really even any of the other building principals. This is really dependent and only with us right now because Deanna wants this for her school and she would own the dog. I don't anticipate that we would have six building principals who wanted to do the same thing. And the only way that it could happen would be that they would need to come and make their own proposal. Because this is too dependent on, this situation is because Deanna wants to do this for her building. But we have not had any conversations about making this district-wide at all. So...
But the only problem, it's we're, we're gonna spend public funds on one school only and not make it available to any other school. So I, I think we have to be careful about how we, we roll this out. That's the whole...
Well, we're faced with the same issue. We, we can't use public funds to fund any part of this program. We've had absolutely no problem raising the mon, fund, funds privately. And when the first dog came to us, Ace, we raised $25,000 in a very short time because people just loved the idea of what we were doing. And same thing when, when Marshall came. We, we did another fundraiser and, you know, people in the, there's a lot of people in the community who see the wisdom of this. The district attorney now has their own dog for the courtroom, who's related to Marshall and Ace and does incredible work with...
Oh, I love the program. I have nothing, I just want to make sure that we do it right.
Yeah, sure.
Well, we probably won't be able to answer everything tonight with two other presentations. We wanted to make sure we just started the dialogue. But again, while, while you're here, we should ask as many questions.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a question. I have, I've had an opportunity to see a couple of presentations about this. And one that comes to mind was a presentation of therapy dogs that were used after the Sandy Hook... Catastrophe. I couldn't even figure out what to really call it.
There's no word for that.
But, but the success that they had there. And, and quite frankly, if, if we had and if we could use, we're saying $10,000 of district funds to, to put this in place, the, the return on investment, I have no question, but what, if you think about the amount of time and the amount of money that we spend with these young people and the environments that they're coming from and what we have to work with and the success that we'll have and the impact that we'll have, I have no question in my mind that it is. Now, what I might recommend, if it, if it turns out that funding it becomes the real question here, this might be a great opportunity for the Education Foundation. I mean, this could be a first, you know, a great first project that I would challenge the Education Foundation to, to take a look at. Because there's, there isn't anybody who won't benefit. I mean, I got, and I'm not a dog person, but I'm sitting here and just watching that dog. And I'm, I'm more relaxed than I've been in weeks. You know? So, you know, it's, we gotta, we gotta know more about this. We gotta figure it out. And quite frankly, we gotta find out how to make it happen. That's the way I feel.
I agree.
Perhaps Aviva has already been in touch with the Palmyra School District, but they've used therapy dogs for years in their school district. They have several dogs working there. And a retired special education teacher was the one who got that all started. And if you go on their website, they have a lot of information about the program. And I can send you some articles that pertain to that school district.
I haven't called them, so I will.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Thank you for being here. It was really educational.
Very welcome.
We, we appreciate the time that you've given us. And I hope moving forward, we can work this out.
Yes. And if you do research on it, I would love to be involved in that because we've, you know, made this an important part of our program.
Thank you so much. First of some further conversations.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall, yes.
Come back soon.
He wants to say goodbye to everyone.
Bye, Deanna.
Good night.
Wait a minute. Is there anything bothering you tonight? Is that, no? Okay.
We should do Project Lead the Way next because we have guests for that too. All right. So we'll bring more information.
Okay. So we're back to technology.
Could we do 6.3 though? Because we have guests for that. Yes.
Project Lead the Way?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's 6.3. So we'll flip, flip-flop. Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
We'll wake you up.
So Project Lead the Way, Aviva and the crew of people that are, that are here. Project Lead the Way. I know we have Dave and Maggie and our guest from Marist. And Aviva will introduce everybody.
We are a flexible board. We can do things.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say a few things about Project Lead the Way. It's been wonderful to work with this program, which is still very new. And it's been a big learning for me. So I'm just going to say a few general things about Project Lead the Way and what it is for everyone's benefit. And then there's a lovely presentation I want to introduce. Peter Krag is a Marist professor and part of our committee. And we have a very active Project Lead the Way committee with parents and community members and staff. And of course, David Chakowski and Maggie Schimmel-Fenig are Project Lead the Way teachers, also business teacher and technology teacher at FDR and active members of the committee. And they're going to do, show a presentation that they did with the students and put together with the students along with Erin Edwards. So we are members of the Project Lead the Way network. We're a part of a community of K-12 schools, colleges, universities, corporate and philanthropic partners across the country, united around a passion for providing students with inspiring, engaging, and empowering learning opportunities. Project Lead the Way students have increased access to scholarships, preferred admission at colleges and universities, internships, and industry connections. There are three pathways in Project Lead the Way. There's computer science, engineering, and biomedical. Currently, we're offering the first two. We're exploring the idea of bringing the Project Lead the Way Gateway Middle School Program to Havland in the coming years. And the alignment to the four Cs is unmistakable. So in Project Lead the Way materials, and I'm going to quote here, it says, "Students learn problem-solving strategies, critical and creative thinking, and how to communicate and collaborate." So there couldn't be better alignment. We're writing it ourselves. We have a highly dedicated Project Lead the Way committee. And this is, I'll, I'll, I'll let them explain what it is. I, I'll just mention about Gateway. It is middle school, sixth through eighth grade. There are six nine-week modules that are 45 minutes each, including robotics, space and flight, stackables. All three pathways are embedded. And there's like a three-day training, could be three to five days depending on the module. So it, the middle school is different. These are courses. So these are credit-bearing, full courses of Project Lead the Way. And in the middle school, it's really embedded into the technology curriculum. So it doesn't take over the whole curriculum.
Just, just, Troy, sit down. Is there an elementary school module as well?
There, yeah, there is. So yes, we're interested in that as well. All right. So I'm gonna, do you know how to pull it up? If you could help. Find the video.
Ooh, that's that one.
Get the Windows button.
Got it.
I like PLTW because we get to work in groups to solve problems, which is pretty much what engineering is. And it gives me a taste of what engineering of the old world is.
I like PLTW because it helps me in my other classes and it connects with trigonometry and helps me succeed in my other classes.
What I like about PLTW is that it makes us work together and cooperate in certain situations. So we don't have to do any other kinds of classes.
I like PLTW because it's interesting. You just get the robots all day. And it helps me in other classes of physics and chemistry.
What I like about PLTW is that it gives us a bit of life, example of how our future will be in terms of engineering careers.
It's a different style of class. It's all hands-on.
I like it because it's fun and there's lots of math in it.
I'm Kyrgis Mateo. I'm in 12th grade. Something I learned in this class is to do basic coding in Python and MIT App Inventor. And right now, we're working on a program that communicates with a server to post and clear posts from it.
Hi, my name is Hugh Wolware. I'm in, I'm a senior at FDR High School. And I'm in Intro to Computer Science. And something that I've learned is that the use of Haverstein formula from calculus to actually calculate the distance between two points on a curve and using that in a program to kind of be used as a GPS app. And the current project that I'm wrapping up is an app to help food service workers and customers using an automated menu.
My name is Paul Sanford and I'm in 10th grade. And I came into this computer science class not really knowing anything at all about computers. And from, from there, I went to actually learning how to write an app on either a computer on different interfaces with different languages.
So thank you. We really just wanted the opportunity to...
So String Festival was lovely too, you know, Dave.
Yeah, it was. Just so you know, it's there. Yeah, we just wanted the opportunity to say thank you to the board for your support of Project Lead the Way and to let you know that, you know, when, when programs first come on, just like the presentation you saw, there's a lot of interest and you get to see a lot about it. But this is really going very strong. A lot of excitement. It's a, a growing program. And, you know, we haven't added staff. We've, you know, created more of these courses and less of something else as we've been going along, though I can't promise that'll always be the case as we want to grow the program. But, you know, again, I want to thank you and I want to thank the teachers who not only put this together, but are great supporters and our, our community members who join us. I don't know if you have any questions, and I'm glad they're here. They may be able to help.
I have one question because I can't remember. I should know this. But do you have to qualify? It's an elective? Or do you have to qualify to get into the program? Are there pre-requir, there, there are prerequisites, I'm pretty sure. Or not?
There are intro-level courses available to any student?
To any student.
But it is a sequence of courses. So the intro computer science leads into an AP level computer science and then the actual second AP computer science. The engineering starts off with Intro to Engineering Design, which leads into Principles of Engineering, which gets a taste of all the different engineering fields. And then there's, starting next year, a digital electronics-specific course. So again, you can't proceed in that without taking the prerequisite. But any student is invited to and encouraged to take any of those intro-level courses.
Okay. So one more reason why you, when you enter high school, ninth grade, you should look at all four years of your catalog to make sure that you can get into the programs that you want to get by the time you have free periods, like 11th and 12th grade.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, everybody. Aviva asked me just to speak to our enrollment for the female population at the school. Typically, unfortunately, females are highly underrepresented in engineering and in programming. And so the Project Lead the Way committee did some brainstorming and decided that if I were to go into the classrooms as a female instructor, that perhaps we could see some increased enrollment. And we found that to be so effective. I went into every math class one day, just kind of hit every class that I could get into. And our enrollment, our enrollment went up significantly. Even in the intro, typically when you have an introductory course, the next year you'll see a decrease in enrollment. We saw increased enrollment across the board in all of the courses. And a lot of feedback from math teachers saying that when the girls heard what the program was really about, it helped to remove the stigma behind it. So we're hoping to see more girls getting into the program as well.
What are the numbers? How many, how many students are we seeing involved? Not necessarily male or female, but if you've got that detail as well, it'd be great. But how many students are...
So our first year, this year, we ran Project Lead the Way Intro. And we had enrollment of about 45 students.
This is just the intro.
Just the intro. Just, so, yeah, we'll give you kind of a little bit of everything. So that was the introductory Project Lead the Court, Way course. And we had decided, thankfully, through the support and honestly, Avgrier stepping in already a few years ago, she and I had talked a number of times. And she said, you know what? This is where the future is. And that was one of the things that really struck the kids. Statistically, they are saying that three years from now, we will have far more jobs available than what we are actually graduating from college in the engineering and computer science realm. And so we've been offering the AP course as well. That's been running for years, but it ran every other year. And now this year, we went over to running it every year. So this year, we had 10 kids originally enrolled in the AP computer science course. Next year, we have 35 students enrolled in the AP, one of the AP. We're adding a new AP Project Lead the Way dual course that has about 10 students enrolled in it now. And our introductory enrollment is up to, I believe, 54 students now. That's the last, I'm kind of trying to remember the numbers. So we've seen increased enrollment across the board in the programming venue. And for engineering, I think we've seen the same. We've seen a very steady enrollment there. You, do you remember their, I don't remember their exact numbers.
Yeah, I can't speak to that real well, other than I can say the first year we instituted it, which was last year, the engineering strand, we had a big burst of students came in. And many of them are continuing on in the pathway. And we're still seeing new students enter in. So the overall numbers are continuing to increase because we're offering more of the ladder of rigor. And they're following along. And we've got more coming in behind them. So yeah, we're definitely seeing more interest in this.
What we're also seeing is a lot of overlap as the students, a lot of its awareness and getting into those classrooms helped tremendously. We see a lot of students who think that they'll probably get into engineering, understanding how important it is that they take at least one programming course because they're not going to get through their engineering curriculum in college without being able to write code. So we're really, we're starting to really serve that population through these two diverse strands that we have.
Great.
Any, any other question? I, I guess I'd like to ask about elementary school. Because I think if you really want this program to take off, you have to involve kids younger and you have to involve their parents so that they know that it's important and that, that it's not magic. I was a software engineer for 45 years. And when I started, everybody just thought a computer was a black box. And everybody was like, you do what? And I kept saying, it's really easy. It's not that hard. But it does get complex. But, you know, it's like, but I think the program will, I want to say explode, but it will... But I think the program will, I don't want to say explode, but it will greatly increase if we start earlier.
Yeah, and we planned for having technology teachers at Havland so they'll be able to attend training and really move that program. And we can certainly, there's like one-day conferences for Project Lead the Way that are just where we can send principals or we can send teachers to just start exploring the elementary part. Yeah, I mean, it made sense to me to go from high school to middle school and then elementary so to get a year under our belt at Havland, but it's never too early to start looking at it.
Does Project Lead, do I have any camp-like summer program thing?
The teacher training is, they have like a January week, usually regents week, and then they have summer training. So, you mean camp for students? I don't think so. Yeah.
My son is in the program and the nice thing, when he graduates, I think he gets 12 credits from RIT.
If he goes to RIT?
Well, no, no. They're actual RIT credits.
Well, not all schools will take him.
But still, it's pretty good. Could save a semester.
RIT is a special relationship with Project Lead the Way, so that's a really good connection there. Thank you.
I think it's a great program. I mean, it's...
Oh, I should say both those pathways are... By the fall, we'll have the complete pathways of two out of three. So, our original plan was to make sure that that happened and then we could start talking about middle school and biomedical and elementary now.
And when you go to any of our award ceremony and you look at how many students say they want to go into biomedical, right? James, were you going to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead. No, I'm done.
All right. So, yeah, I did Project Lead the Way last year. It was personally for me, I didn't really like the course, but I know it's definitely a good course to take. It's difficult, but it's, the teachers are able to help you through like the learning process and able to understand the many different things that you learn in there. And I definitely do think it's a good program. Every time I would like walk into the classrooms like after school to do some work or something, I'd always see like these robots being put together. And some of my friends that did Project Lead the Way would be talking about coding and stuff and I was very impressed because I had no idea what they were saying. So, it's definitely a good program for as soon as to be taken part of and I support it.
Programming is easy. It's the research to get to the point where you actually write the code. That's the hard part.
So, thank you so much for being here and helping out.
Thank you.
Wow, this turned into a feel-good meeting, right?
Is that a bad thing?
That's a good thing. I said it's a feel-good thing. All right.
Now, we got Rick.
Maybe you'll substitute Teres.
We all do.
And thank you so much, Rick, for your flexibility in letting us bump you down.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Outsmarted by a dog and a software program.
Little kids and dogs.
Actually, I'm grateful for the switches you made because I did not want to follow the dog.
That's a tough act to follow.
All right, so good evening, everybody. I'm Rick Wirth, the Director of Technology, and this is the promised June update for our technology initiatives in the district.
One of the board goals.
Right. And I'll turn this on. There we go. All right, so the equipment and how it's enhancing teaching. Again, when I presented back in January, I talked about the SAMR model that is still in place. And again, if you look at the bottom, substitution, we talked about the $1,000 pencil, which I clarified to the $250 pencil because that's the cost of a Chromebook. Just people just, instead of writing it, type it, all the way up to redefinition. As I met with the technology integrators today, Chris Chmeris and Michelle Palmieri, who both work three days a week in district, working one-to-one with teachers. We'll talk about that in a minute, but they were talking about the changes they've seen and that our teachers at Havland are indeed climbing up this ladder and doing some very neat innovative stuff with the Chromebooks, with the screens, with the technology we've given them. The chart that is up there, kind of hard to read at these screen sizes, but when you look on the PowerPoint itself, you can dig in a little bit. One of the dashboards that we have available to us is called Better Cloud. The other one is Go Guardian. This is a screenshot of the kind of information we can get. And if you look closely, you can see the searches that are being done, the kinds of programs that are being used. The part that's blocked off there is a list of students who have done really questionable searches, shall we say, are top offenders. So, we pull a ton of data off that. I chose this in particular because it shows that the top pieces of software are educational, Verso, Google Docs. Some really good internet searches are out there. The kids are getting very adept at learning how to search effectively with Google. So, what we're seeing is a really good use of the technology we've given to the children. Google Classroom and Go Guardian has been a game changer. When we met in January, we were kind of talking about our struggles with iBoss and the filtering. And in speaking this back in other districts, they're using something called Go Guardian. Go Guardian has been a game changer for us. I had a board member come to me tonight struggling with iBoss and the Chromebook because it just is challenging as all get out. All the student Chromebooks are now on Go Guardian. It provides filtering, but it also allows us to monitor their activities online and see what they're doing and follow up with kids who might be getting into some questionable activities. It also allows the teachers to kind of just monitor the classrooms, limit the number of websites they go to. For maps testing, for an example, we used to have to go into lockdown browsers and all sorts of craziness. Now, the teacher just sets a scene in Go Guardian and runs the test themselves and we do very little in the background. So, it's become very much more teacher managed. So, it's been a really good investment for us. Classroom and Go Guardian together are really dynamic. What have we learned from the Chromebooks? Well, our damage log as of June 13th indicated 357 reported incidents. And instances are reported by the students. We have a kiosk in the library at Havland. Student brings her device there. They enter a ticket right on the kiosk and leave the Chromebook. So, it's all student managed. We get that report automatically through Google. And the courier brings a Chromebook over and we have a great technician who spends a lot of their time replacing screens. If you look up the screens, it's our number one, the cracked screens was a big issue. We are solving that issue by swapping out those Chromebooks that we have. We're going to use those in elementary classrooms next year. They won't travel home. We are buying the touchscreen Chromebook next year. That comes with a Gorilla Glass screen, so less prone to breakage. We're also investing in hard shell Chromebook cases in order to protect the machines even further. So, I think we've learned quite a bit from all of this. Any device that goes home, high school and middle school will have a hard shell case and a Gorilla Glass screen, so it should solve that number one issue. When we looked at the insurance data, 87 families took advantage of the insurance policy. It's 25 bucks for the year. It was out of the parent's pocket. Of that, we had five claims and of those five claims, two were denied. I think for some people, they feel like it's necessary to have that. They're concerned about it. I'm not feeling like it was a good investment on anybody's part. We will have to decide whether or not we want to offer that again through the Worth Avenue group or if we just want to not go that way. The tech committee itself was sort of leaning towards, "Let's not do that again next year." Management software is essential. That's the Go Guardian piece. The at-home filtering was very challenging previously. I can't tell you how many hours Teres McKenna spent working with iBoss on this. When we adopted Go Guardian, it's become much simpler. It is a moving target. And children will find ways around things because not every website classifies itself and that's how filtering works. So, children will find ways around things. What we do is we respond. We block the sites as we find them and we become aware of them. We counsel children. We counsel administrators. We counsel parents. Teres and I did some workshops in the community. We had low attendance, but the people who attended, this was their number one concern, was keeping my kids safe online. So, we're continuing to work on that area. As a matter of fact, our Google Summit in October that I'll talk about later, we are kind of groundbreaking that we're going to offer a community night. We're inviting anybody to come in and the feature will be internet safety. We're going to have a keynote speaker on internet safety and really talking about these issues. So, again, only touchscreen Chromebooks moving forward. And don't worry about the Chromebooks we've invested in. We are going to use every single one of them. We need every single one of them. We're going to move those down to the elementary level where they will not travel home. They're really good, solid machines. It's going to allow us to really, to move things forward with technology in just really good ways, I think. Our technology integration support was a very valuable part of this whole product. We had Chris Chmeris, Michelle Palmieri this year. They're each here for three days a week through the Model Schools program at Bosse's. Chris is actually leaving. He's going to New Jersey. He's going back to where he came from. He was a great resource, but they're already going to bring in another gentleman. I think his name is Matt Miller. Michelle will come back. She was phenomenal. Her first year as a tech integrator and people enjoyed working with her. She, as you can see, the blue bar graph on the right was the number of appointments they had each month. Those are the individual appointments. That was working one-on-one with the teacher, either in the classroom, in a counseling session, whatever it was. Then in addition, they did 45 scheduled PD sessions in the building. And, I'm sorry, that was theirs. They did 43 PD sessions in the building and a total of 400 sessions of group workshops, small and individual. So, just a lot of time working with teachers. In addition, they took our entire digital citizenship curriculum and made it a self-paced learning piece for students. So, when students start next year, we're designing elementary, middle, and high school levels. Students can take this digital citizenship and learn what it means to be safe online, what it means to be responsible online. So, they have done a phenomenal amount of work. Next year, we'll again, we'll have the same setup, three days each person per week. Instead of just focus at Havland, we're going to share the wealth and spread it out across the district. So, the time will be focused at the high school, middle school, but time will be available to the elementaries as well. Tech Services, again, an amazing team back there. They're at Havland Daily largely. That was our new guy, Chris Lassner, who we contracted Core BTS. He spent about half of every day working on Chromebooks. I really was getting worried about him for a while there. He did a great job. He actually figured out how to replace screens instead of just buying a new Chromebook. He figured out a number of repairs that we're able to do so we could keep our equipment going for a little bit longer. He does very well in talking with kids about what he's seeing and how they can handle things differently. We offered 45 scheduled PD sessions. A lot of that is through Teres McKenna. I was able to do a few. Those are just fun. We go every month to every building and it is a lot of teacher direction. So, we have a set agenda, but if people come in with a question, that's where we go. We'll continue to do those next year. We're also offering PD sessions over the summer this year. And again, we contract with Bosse's for four gigabytes in bandwidth to ensure enough service. That's just a technical piece to make sure that with all these Chromebooks, we're not having significant delays. And the work that Forrest Adder and the team did on this wireless network in this district is nothing short of stellar. It is robust. It is handling the load. It's doing very well. District technology priorities. Where are we going? So, we have a district technology subcommittee. Mr. Zagorski and Mr. Mittermeyer sit on that subcommittee. That group is literally wrapping up. We're winding down. It expanded to a large group with students and community and the whole bit when the SmartBond came out. And the stated goal of that group at the time was really, where does the money go? That's really been determined at this point. So, the group has agreed that we're winding down. That's going to be folded into the district leadership team. So, and the board members have agreed that as we need to meet, they feel that we will certainly set some time aside, but the main function of that group is done. We are just waiting for approval from the state, as we know. Chromebooks, interactive screens, so yes. Awaiting final approval from the state. As we know, we started this process way back last year when I took over the job in April. We submitted multiple rounds of applications. It went through multiple offices in the state and as every district went through, you submitted, it got returned with edits. You submitted, it got returned with it. We went through six program offices. I will say that all of the edits that were made were not substantive. They were things like recategorize this, change this to done instead of finished. I mean, it was just what it is. The latest news is that we are at the final committee approval. That is literally three people. The Chancellor of the State of Education, the Director of Budget, and one other person whose title escapes me. Those three people get in a room and say, "Nice job. Here's your money." That's what we're waiting for. But nobody can tell you when that committee is meeting. So, we're waiting.
They don't even have the dates.
We're in the same queue as 65 other schools, I believe, at this point. So, we're waiting. Our plan is good. It's Chromebooks, interactive screens, all the peripherals, network enhancement, just waiting. E-rate funding is another chunk of money. We get that through the telecom giants. They send money to the schools and we have a good chunk of change to spend. We have decided to spend that money in networking closets. Our networking closets are literally closets. They're janitorial closets. There's a steam pipe. Our main server room, for those in IBM, this is frightening. Our main server closet at the high school that runs the district has steam pipes running through it. I couldn't even. So, we have negotiated with Mr. Partey. We are moving it next door. If you know what the coat check room is, it's where the copy machine is. That will become our main server closet. We are buying air-conditioned racks, so we're not relying on the room ambient temperature anymore. The racks themselves will be air-conditioned. We're going to do that in every building. That's through the E-rate funding. It's not costing the district a dime, but it's going to significantly impact and improve our equipment's lifespan. So, we're really looking, that's going to be work spaced out over a year. That's not going to happen tomorrow, but we're really looking forward to getting that done. And then, of course, our district funds. We're grateful for the funding provided by the district. It really allows us to keep our current fleet of machines up to date. Our Havland Mac Lab, for instance, we have machines in there that are nine, 10 years old. They're way past their service life. That entire lab will be updated this summer. We have our library machines that we're updating. We're getting all of our district desktops to Windows 10. We're getting better with our software purchasing process. I will just say that in the past, it's kind of been, "You like that software? Great." We needed a vetting process. We needed to make sure we were CIPA compliant. So, that is pieces that I'm putting together in a process. There's now at least a request form that we have staff to fill out so I can begin the process of doing that. And we are in the midst of transitioning to a new website. If you're on the district email server, I sent out an end-of-year tech update. There's a link to the new updated website. That wasn't just a frivolous choice. The company got bought out. We didn't have a choice. We had to upgrade. So, we're going with a company called Blackboard. We're in design mode now. On Monday, the digital media coordinators are sitting with me and we're going over the design and what can we do to make our website really pop. And then, that was backwards. Okay, what are we going to look like one year from now? The program, well, the two tech integrators will be back, but we're going to support the entire district. We're going to be adding a technician. We've actually asked that it not be a network technician. We have many talented people back there now. What we need is someone who can just deal with microcomputer repairs. That's what the position is posted at. Rebecca Lloyd has been very helpful with that piece. Instead of 2,500 Chromebooks, I just want you to look at this number for a moment. 2,500 Chromebooks, we're going to 4,300 Chromebooks. We're doubling pretty much the number of Chromebooks we have in the district. It's a significant impact. If you think about all the time it just takes to set those machines up and get them in the hands of children. And I can only point to Roger Gill over there on the side. Most of you know he volunteers at the Tech Services Department. Without him, we would not be anywhere near where we are now. He literally spends hours upon hours just setting up our Chromebooks for us. So, it's because of Roger that we're able to put numbers up there like this. 1,800 desktops. We're going to increase our desktops a little bit, but actually what we're finding as we're setting up this new technology. So, in a classroom in a year, a screen like this will be up. On the back will be a small PC. You won't even see it. Teachers are saying, "Well, then, I don't need my desktops." They're right. That will be their desktop. And in combination with their own little Chromebook where they can do their e-school data work, it actually becomes less stuff in the rooms. So, while I've put 2,000 desktops, just from the way people are talking, I'm beginning to question how many desktops we'll really need, only because it's all about portability now and a desktop is a fixed item. So, people are actually excited about, "I don't need three desktops. I don't need those three stations. I can do more creative things with the Chromebooks." Flat panels, we have 90 interactive flat panels right now throughout the district and 120 smart boards approximately. I think that number is actually low. Next year, you'll notice no smart boards. 294 interactive flat panels. That's every educational space in the district. That's 204 big ones that will be new and then the 90 existing ones repositioned throughout the district. And you can see some detail about that. That is a project that will be staged. So, we're starting with rooms that have nothing and there are several. So, they will get the first round of installations. Then the rooms that have the oldest smart boards will be the second ones to be installed. The last rooms to get the newest technology will be the ones that have the newest smart boards. Because I don't want to say we're going to hit this building first and then we'll get to the rest of you. We want to share the wealth, so everybody will get something throughout the course of this installation. Because of the SmartBond funding, I can't tell you when that will be. Most likely, at this point of the year, I can say it will be sometime in the fall and spring. So, we'll be doing it throughout the course of next year. And thank you to Mr. Garcia because he's going to help me do that second shift without disrupting classes. Our network equipment, again, were really good, but what we noticed is, for instance, at North Park Elementary, there is one network drop in every room versus Netherwood that was wired many years ago by some great parent volunteers. There's seven network drops in every room. My goal with some of this money is to make sure that every room has at least two network drops to allow for room flexibility. If you go into Havland and North Park, the network drops are behind the classroom doors. You don't have a lot of room flexibility in design with that. So, by installing a second one, it gives us more room. Again, the E-rate funding and the SmartBond funding will allow us to do that work. The AC network racks and the main server closet will be relocated to a better space. Other things, the updated... Other things, the updated website, because we have a six-year-old website and we continue to define department process. My staff has gotten really good about documenting things. So when we create these new programs and we talk about how we're setting users up, we're documenting that. So should the entire department collapse, there's a whole guidance folder full of documents for whoever takes over after us. Other tech news, amazing staff. There are, those are called Bitmojis. That was one of our fun tasks. We each had to design our own little faces. Everyone loves Chance because he's got the hair, right? So currently, we're, again, we're still offering training sessions. We did seven community sessions. We're supporting a thousand adults, close to four thousand student users, lots of equipment out there. We processed and closed twenty-five hundred tech support tickets July through June. And you have to imagine that some of those tickets are three seconds and some of those tickets are thirty days in order to solve. A lot of work is represented there. This summer, because of the staggering amount of work, we figure we have about fifteen-hundred man-hours over the course of this coming summer available to us, and we have about forty-five hundred man-hours worth of work, should everything come in with a SmartBond. We desperately need volunteer assistance. So if you know of anybody who is interested in helping out, maybe learning a little bit about technology, it won't be glamorous work, but it will certainly be educational. So if you know of anybody, please have them contact me directly. We're going to put them on the list and as we need help, we're going to call people in. And the news that I'm really proud of is our Google Summit. We did one last August, but it was very focused on Hyde Park teachers. There's a group called Nice Gate that comes in and they host a conference. What we're doing is Friday afternoon, they will provide the classes to FDR High School for the integration with the one-to-ones that we'll be getting next year. And then Friday evening, they're going to host an event focused on internet safety for our community. So parents, students, anybody in this state can come to this free of charge and learn about keeping your kids safe, about responsible citizenship online. Nice Gate was great, but they were staggered by this request. They really didn't know what to do with it. So we're designing this from the ground up. And then Saturday, we'll be a traditional summit with lots of great workshops. What's really nice is if our staff is willing to provide two sessions, could be the same thing, but two sessions, they get in free. Other than that, it's ninety-nine bucks for the day, which is a bargain. So we're really excited about this. It will be at FDR High School. And we're hoping we'll have technology in place for that by that time. If not, we'll put in projectors and smart boards. And then, questions?
Anyone got any questions? I got one.
Please.
Maybe two. First one is the four-gigabyte pipe. That's from Bosse's to the high school.
Yes.
And then our wide area network, I mean, each building doesn't get the ability to do.
No, everything comes into the high school first. And then it spreads out from there. But it's at least a gigabyte connection in between buildings. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it is pretty good.
The other thing is on, since I get to pal around with Roger at mostly concerts, he mentioned the soft cases had come back, having had some unusual uses.
Yes, they did.
And I was wondering if the same thing's going to happen to the hard cases and how sturdy are they? It didn't sound like the soft cases were.
Yeah, the soft cases were a stopgap, honestly. Because at the time, we were, remember what we did last year with screens, with Chromebooks, with cases was all through district funds. Because promises had been made with the assumption that the SmartBond would come through and the SmartBond application hadn't even started. So when I walked in in April, the goal was, get this done, Rick. So we got it done. And we bought the cases we could afford at the time. They're just neoprene cases. They're good for, I'm not frankly sure what they're good for. They're not very good, but we have them. So yes, kids did decorate them with marker and everything else. The newer cases are a hard shell case. Spack and Kill has used them for over a year. They, so I can't say which vendor we're going to go with yet, but we have two right now that are within the right price range, around twenty bucks a case. They are hard shell, so it should protect against those compression. That's where you put your Chromebook in your backpack, pile it with books on both sides and put it on your back and it goes crack, right? So it should protect against things like that. Nice thing it comes emblazoned with a school logo, which I think is kind of cool. So we're hoping it will protect against more of the damage than what the neoprene ones were able to.
And just one observation, I hope that the backlog and getting money is unlike aid. I think I read in one of the packet things, the queue is seventeen years long for school aid.
Some of it, yeah.
In talking with the Dutchess County tech directors, those that have received money like Wappingers, they were saying that the repayment portal was actually pretty quick, six weeks. That was their experience. And that was fairly consistent with the tech directors. So it's just getting the money. That's the problem right now. Getting the reimbursement actually seems to go a little bit quicker. So we're hopeful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Rick.
That was easy. Thank you, everybody. And James, Etherwood.
Okay. Well, just, we know Therese did the whole thing. Okay. At this time, I have a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, I skipped on it.
Remember, we're going to reverse order.
Let me see.
Did she have any?
No, we did that.
We already did that.
We did that.
Okay, sorry.
And we're gone.
No.
All right. Well, would anybody like to address the board? All the people that are left here? Anybody over there? We have, okay. I have a motion to return to open session.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And that brings us to district plan, board discussion, district plan for shared decision-making. That's something.
Yeah, it's an updated plan. We did it through the district leadership team, so it's there for approval.
Okay. Okay. I do remember reading it. All right. All in favor, then, I guess? Well, do we need to have a form of vote?
I don't, I don't even think so.
It's just, we have to have one, right?
I think we need to update it every two years and we need to have the district leadership.
Are there any questions on it? It's long. I kind of skipped through it as fast as I could, but I did, I did look at it.
It basically defines our structure for shared decision-making with our building leadership teams and our district leadership teams and who should be on them and.
Okay, if there's no, no questions, we'll move on to board subcommittee reports. We had an audit committee meeting where we met with the external auditors and discussed what their plan was for the external audit of the district and many other, that's kind of what that one was.
You know, I just think that it's worth a little more on the, we had an ad hoc committee that did an RFP for architectural and engineering firms. We, I'm not sure how many invitations we sent out, but we ended up getting proposals on four different firms. We interviewed, chose to interview three of those firms. And I think it was, it was a good process. I think we, we saw some different ideas, different approaches. To me, it opens us, it made me realize how many more questions we have than answers to what we need. And that's going to be a critical part. And we're also, the schedule is very tight and we're coming into a very difficult time of the year where there's, you know, we're looking at starting, bringing an architectural firm in in July and August with hopes of having something to present in October. Well, there's a lot of work that has to be done with perhaps, maybe not the full forces of all of our faculty available for discussion on it. So there's some real challenges there.
You said faculty, the people.
The people.
Not on faculty.
Yeah, not yet. No, your faculty's been gone a long time.
We need an aggressive early fall, maybe even August schedule.
Yeah, and that's really part of what we came down to is it's September, we've got to be prepared to hit the ground running in September and our architectural firm is going to be key in that. So it was, it was an interesting experience. It was a good experience. James may have regretted raising his hand for that one.
Do you get an idea of, once we pick a thing, how long it would take to put a proposal together for the kind of?
It really is, it's really going to depend, you mean how long it will take them to give us a concept?
The final thing and before we can go out for a vote.
You know, it depends a lot on our, our availability of people and discussion. I mean, that's, that's part of it. It's going to take, you know, it's going to take time with, with principals and department chairs and teachers to, to get a sense. I mean, you know, we're talking about primarily a science project, science lab, education spaces and HVAC equipment again. HVAC is easy. They don't, you know, you.
I don't, I don't think the teachers want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, on the AC, no.
But it's a great field for the summer.
Yeah, yeah, they can get started on that.
Oh, that's good. That's a good way.
So, so there's a lot to come.
The discussions were centered on December vote. And when they went through the whole.
Doesn't sound like that's going to be a possibility, though.
It is. They, they said it was a possibility with quotes. But it said it can be done as long as they can get the support they're going to need to get the questions answered that they have.
Okay.
And he says that could be, that could fall out to be multiple meetings a week with different contingent, contingent groups to gather the information.
Okay, I think, I think it's important to know how long the process will take once we've decided what we're going to do to also, so if you, if you, if you miss December and don't do it until March or April, that pushes it back into the year, however long that, that take, I mean, the whole thing is connected.
I would say that it's much more predictable.
Once you have one.
From, even from referendum vote, from the time that we have a referendum vote to the time we actually put a shovel on the ground, it's easier to predict what that timeline is than what it is from now to referend.
Okay. So. So there's work to do.
Yeah. And a big, probably the biggest variable in the post-referendum process is the SED approval process. How long, you know, the architect and engineers, they can all say it'll take this long for them to design it, but then once it's delivered to SED, how long does it sit in a queue? How long is a queue at that point? It's going to be the next variable.
Okay. There was a scheduled policy meeting, which I mistakenly thought was on a different day, but we did come in, I did get in there at the end. And so we do have a policy on the agenda tonight that's required by the state. It's putting into policy, you'll see later on what we already do, so it's, it's not a big deal. Any other?
And the health committee met. And Lauren shared from food services that the government put the new SOL requirements on hold, so it won't be lower for next year, which she was overjoyed because she said it was going to be a sizable increase to offer. And she also said she's having trouble. She cannot find whole grain breadcrumbs. So she's having to make a request for an exemption. She can't make meatballs. She says the way she's been making them, she's buying whole grain bread, making her own croutons and then crushing them. But she can't get a supplier. And the other thing is the health advisory committee will be rolled into the SAVE committee next year. So it won't be a health, it'll be SAVE.
Okay. Interesting thought, that if you can't get something, what's the requirement for being able to substitute? There must be some kind of.
Start a company on whole wheat breadcrumbs.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it sounds like a pretty rigid system, that's all.
I think there might be waivers.
There's a waiver for that.
There's a waiver.
That's what she was asking for.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have one point of discussion that I just want to point, I just want to point out. I did a little research and I thought it was worth sharing before we vote on it. On the consent agenda is a donation from the Hudson River Rowing Association. And specifically, they are donating a skull. And the skull is named after Desiree Burns. And I just thought this was really a wonderful moment. Desiree graduated from FDR in, well, she was a freshman in two thousand and three. And in her freshman year, she was invited to the U.S. National Development Camp where she was selected to represent the U.S. in the Can-Am Max Regatta. She was a member of the eight, which is an eight-rower boat, which finished first and was part of the pair which came in second at the Can-Am Max Regatta. It was during her freshman year. During her sophomore year through her senior year, she was selected to the U.S. Junior National Team. She just kept winning, winning, winning. And then eventually, in her senior year, prior to world competitions, her boats won the Senior Eight at the two thousand and six U.S. Rowing National Championship and won the intermediate pair at the two thousand and five U.S. National Championship. This, her, her, her career in rowing is impressive. I can't even read the whole thing. I just thought that it was important to know that the donation was a boat named in her honor. She made it all the way up through college with, again, you know, just with a phenomenal record. And after college, she was invited to the U.S. Olympic Training Camp and right before she fractured ribs and realized that she could no longer row anymore. But the Desiree Burns boat that's being donated tonight is after a young graduate who had a stellar rowing career.
And she was a very nice young lady as well.
I'm sorry I didn't.
I know her and I know the family. She's really a nice kid, though. Not a kid anymore, but.
Yeah. I just thought I checked.
A very nice gesture as well. So, all in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Yeah, nice, nice girl, nice family, really. That brings us to special ed. May I have a motion for the special ed placements, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Dan?
I've read the package and recommended its adoption as presented.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for ten point two agreement for special education services.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Can we just get a little, two-sentence rundown on what this is a little bit, just to help clarify?
It's tuition for a special education student that was accepted there.
One, one student?
Yeah. And that means every other option. Both sees, you know, when children don't get accepted into multiple places, there's not many options left.
Nothing? That's okay. You got nothing in? I just want to make sure you...
That, yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I was reading, but I was just...
Yeah.
But you couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for a school-to-work service agreement with the ARC of Dutchess County Corporation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.4, the bond resolution for the buses that were part of the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Just want to make sure with... I'm reading the right one. I have a motion for the term and conditions of employment, 10.5.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And I just make sure which one's which here. Okay. And I have a motion for 10.6, personal matter, administrative staff personnel. This is the hiring of the athletic director in health and physical education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to be abstaining from that because that position is my wife's boss. I figure it may be inappropriate for me.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor? Abstain? Against, I guess. All right. Thank you.
Abstain.
And I have a motion for 10.7, personal matter, confidential manager. That's the appointment of the Assistant Director of School Facilities and Operations. I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will be abstaining from this vote. This is my son.
Okay. And I'd like to point out that Mr. Sheldon had no input into the process. His son did wind out, wind up as the candidate that we selected on the, you know, from a good group and he's qualified. But we wanted to make, we took this out of the consent agenda to make sure that Perry had a chance to get this. So, all in favor? Abstain? Against? Okay, thank you. I have a motion for 10.8, summer work authorization.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is for Secretary of Employers, additional 15 days to work during the summer. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We have a bunch of bids here. I have a motion for the food bid.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for the transportation bid, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.11, overnight field trip for the cheerleaders, I bet. I, yeah.
Fran was here for a while, I think.
Or is this overnight? Yeah.
So moved.
Can I just ask a question? I just wanted to clarify, right, that this says no cost to the students, but it's completely funded by their booster. The school district is funding this.
That is correct. That is correct. There's no, no cost to the district. In fact, girls that can't afford it, they, they do fundraising to make up the costs and everything. So... All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.12, agreements for retiree Colbro Building. That's the health insurance.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. 10.13, agreement for the employee assistant program on the workplace.
Second.
Any discussion there?
Just a question. Two thoughts or two questions. One is, we've been doing this for a number of years, correct?
Yes, yes.
How, do we have any sense as to how much use it gets?
I would have to check with Rebecca. To my knowledge, I know that it's used every year that we've had it. We've used it to help us. We, sometimes we recommend employees. There have been cases when we've insisted employees. So, one of the things that I don't know is I don't know if we have a report because of confidentiality when employees go on their own. But I'll check and see if we have any information. I know each year I've been involved in, with employees using this program.
I mean, I, I'm in so, support of it. I would just like to know statistically if we're getting, if it's getting used.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sure they would be able to share numbers with us. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.14, resolution to fund the capital reserve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Everybody knows that's the one that was voted on by the public. All right, all in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
Can vote on that? You guys can vote it down? That's interesting. I said the public can vote on that and you guys can vote that down? That's interesting.
Yeah, that's, well...
I never, I never, never occurred that.
Interesting. Okay, now we have, Linda, do you want to just make a quick statement on these next ones, just the, the reasoning for them?
Sure. So, we have a tax cert reserve. We actually have four reserves. We have one for each of the last four years. That's what we're allowed to have by law. So, we fund the reserves based on our pending or possible litigation. And we receive notice from the courts when there's petitions filed. And we actually reserve up to 80% of those, of those petitions. At the end of four years, we're legally required to dissolve those tax cert reserves and move the money back to the general fund. So, that's what 10.5 is. It's abolishing the 2012-13 tax cert reserve and moving the remaining funds into the general fund. The 2000, or the 10.16 is a resolution to reduce the 15-16 reserve just to be 80% of our current pending litigation. And 10.17 is to establish and fund a reserve based on, based on tax certs for 2016-17.
Okay. I thought it would be easier just to run that through first and then bring up the, all right. I have a motion for 10.15, resolution.
One question.
Sure, go ahead.
How, how often do we have a tax cert? And the cert is for a reduction of assessments on property, in case anybody didn't get the words. But how often do we have a process? Can they file for a tax cert beyond four years?
Yes.
So, we could have money funded, we then return it to the general fund, and then be faced with a, a process which could award money, a reduction that we no longer have covered by these, the tax certs?
Since I've been here, the five and a half years, that happened once. It was last year. There was, I don't remember the, the, I don't remember the taxpayer, but it was one of the local housing groups. It may, it may have been a condo association or a townhouse association. And they had a settlement or they had a, a decrease in their assessment from 10 years ago. But the, so we had to pay for that from our unassigned fund balance because we couldn't have the reserve for it anymore. But part of the, the deal that they made with the court was that they dropped their cases for their current years.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Who are you on? All right. I have a motion for 10.15, please.
So moved.
Second.
And any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And motion for 10.16, the reduction of the 15-16 tax cert.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion on 10.17, resolution to establish and fund the current 15-17 tax cert.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.18, which is the reserve recommended, that's the general reserve, right? Yeah, the 4%. Okay, the 4% reserve. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a reason?
Anything?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Is there a reason why there's no amount listed?
Yes. This is a resolution that our internal auditors, Alex Open, recommends that we have on the agenda every year, the last meeting of the year. If the auditors determine that we are over the 4%, which I think will, I think will be about 5%, then we could ask the board to potentially add some money to an existing reserve. Normally, that, those decisions would have to be made before June 30th, but with this resolution, we can wait until we have the audit completed. But the decision would have to be made by the board before they actually set the tax levy in August. And last year, we didn't have this on the agenda. And then we had a mistake in one of the, the tax cert, it was one of the tax cert reserves. Where if we had this, we could have corrected it before, before the...
This is an administrative feature. All right. All, we have, can we have a second? Second. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.19. This is a policy about meal charging that's, was sent to us last week. That's required to be on the books by July 1st. About 1st, yeah. Fortunately, the policy is exactly what we currently do, so that we have no problem with that. So, I'm asking that we do first and second consideration so that it'll be on the books by July 1st. So...
So moved.
Second.
Any, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, what is the amount of time of prior notice before the kid gets cut off? It's kind of ambiguous in the policy. I'm just kind of curious.
That's because we don't cut them off.
Okay. Because it says they will. That's why it's without prior notice.
I, I know, but it, it's, it's one thing to publicize that and another to, in fact, that's practice. We don't want to encourage people to not pay, but we will not turn away any student that, for lunch or breakfast. Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.20, memorandum of agreement with the Hyde Park Teachers Association, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to say that this was a two-year rollover and we welcomed the opportunity to work on this with the teachers' union without going to lengthy negotiations and, and certainly avoided...
A few months, but it worked, it worked.
It worked, yep. And I heard it overwhelmingly passed.
Yesterday's vote, yeah, with the union. All right. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Bring us, wait a minute, like, down to public participation. I have a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Anybody wish to join? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? I wish there was a way we could just skip over, when, there's nobody here, but... There are no other matters deemed necessary that I know of upcoming events.
Graduation.
So, tomorrow, tomorrow, weather permitting, graduation will be outdoors starting at 6:00 PM. Otherwise, if it looks like it's not going to be outdoors, I guess the notification will be sometime tomorrow morning.
Yes.
So, hopefully it'll be outside. Otherwise, it'll be in the gym, but you will be notified. And Tuesday...
And can we talk about graduation for one more second?
Oh, sure.
Rick's doing this for me because he's been so, because I've been so crazy.
So, Erin Edwards is our FDR Live Coordinator. And last year, and David Chakowski set the bar before this, but last year, Erin livestreamed the event. So, on the district homepage, on every homepage for every building, there is this little icon that's so schnazzy looking. Teres picked it out. But if you click on it, you get the access to the stream. And tomorrow, this YouTube channel will actually show you the graduate, FDR graduation from the comfort of your home. So Denise and I were talking earlier, if you have elderly folks or people who just don't want to go outside, this will give you the live view courtesy of Erin Edwards and the FDR Live students.
And it'll be streamed in auditorium as well?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
It'll be streamed in the auditorium as well?
Yes. Yeah, that's automatic. The tech services crew takes care of that. So, people can go sit in the auditorium.
Okay. So, there's no excuse not to see the graduation?
You can see the graduation.
The photograph in the spotlight on the homepage, since it was up there, is Kevin Sheehan, former board member and former board president, at the 50th anniversary at North Park Elementary with his kindergarten, first, and second grade teacher. It's a sweet picture.
So, the rumors that Kevin wore out a bunch of teachers is not quite true.
Not quite, no. Okay. And the other meeting is Tuesday, July 11th, which is the reorg meeting. It'll be here at the district office.
Fran, I will not be attending that meeting. I will be out of country.
And it's at 6:00. Oh, that's right. It is at 6:00.
Ukraine, yeah.
Ukraine. Well, what about, you know...
Well, we gotta end the meeting.
Eye photo, whatever, eye, whatever that thing is, you know. Okay.
I thought...
That brings us to, Believe It or Not. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody want to discuss that? No? All right. All in favor? Thank you. We now adjourn.